You guys ready?
Yes.
Please, Scott, describe your take on it.
I like this one, thank you.
Thank you, Amy, thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order at six thirty-two. All right, let's handle the pledge allegiance in a moment of silence and observance about military past or present. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag, we the United States of America. And to the Republic where we just stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Trick tack.
Excuse.
Tim Brenner.
Here.
Eric Guttles.
Here.
Christine Taylor.
Excuse.
Wells.
Here.
John Congdon.
Here.
Rachel Stanky.
Here. Um, we can't do additions to the agenda because we're at a special meeting and we don't have to move forward. Well, move forward with a public comments, pick the agenda items only. Uh, we will open up our public budget hearing, so we may already bring some questions on the budget until we have the agenda item. I would greatly appreciate it, but if you have any other questions or comments, please feel free. Okay, we'll move on first to the old business, um, the senior center kitchen remodel. We did try very hard to even get another estimate and we have had no luck with it. Um, I brought this estimate to the last board meeting, this is so that we're able to move forward and spending the arable money from the Genesee County um, grant that they gave us, we're on a timeframe to get that money spent. Um, and the biggest one was for the kitchen, so they had advised us to move forward with the biggest project first. Um, with that being said, I am going to make a motion to accept Boston Construction's invoice, sorry, estimate, in the amount of sixty-two thousand four hundred dollars to remodel the kitchen at the senior center. And spending the arba Genesee County funds, I'm supporting. Thank you. Do you want to run for a little discussion? Go ahead.
Yeah, here you correct me, you said this, this was a kitchen at the senior center?
Correct.
Oh, I, I thought we were talking about the kitchen back here.
No, this one is, and we have a lot of grants going, but this grant specifically we had gotten last year. It was from the county, they gave a hundred thousand dollars to each minute of having a senior center.
Okay, yes, I think I remember that.
Yeah, so John is working on the estimates for that kitchen and I'm going to cross my fingers by April or May those come to us. I got one already, so, um, we'll bring that one on my next one.
Yeah, okay, all right, okay, all right.
But there are, I believe they have the half the project completed by, uh, October, if I'm right. So they want windows, there's a lot of other small projects that we'll see in the next couple of months. Coming before the board with the senior center, but they wanted the biggest project to be first. You have any questions, John?
Oh, I just had one, is there any, is, is there any grant money of this grant money left?
They haven't sent any of it yet, so the full hundred thousand dollars is.
And so, and can we use it for the roof of the senior center?
That would be, I know, now they can, because we have already accepted, the board already accepted their plan of what they wanted to spend it on. So, if you guys, if you may not recall, well, when this grant was initially given to us, they had to prepare a plan for the board to accept on things that they wanted to come to consider. So the board had accepted that in order for us to receive the grant.
Right, yeah, I remember those, right. But we can't change it now, you're telling me.
I can ask, but I can tell you if we can or not.
I was just, if that's an option, I'd like to divert part of that to the re-roof, it needs a re-roof, as we all know. So, I mean, even if we use part of their money, we could get and have the roof re-done over there, I think would be a well-used, especially if the county's picking up half of it.
It can happen, the county only gets us a hundred thousand, so I can ask and find out, but again, we had to accept that plan months ago to even get the funds.
So, you, just, and we, you don't have to get into this today, but I'm just curious, uh, if we use sixty-two, what's the balance, what's the balance of projects over there?
A hundred thousand, maybe sixty-two thousand, that's all they can spend. So, let's say they wanted the foyer redone, they spent another ten thousand, they can only do the next project. So they had to provide a bunch of projects that they said might exceed the hundred thousand dollars, but they're not going to be able to exceed that hundred thousand.
Yeah, this is the only project I think that's been approved.
If we approve it.
If we approve it, so there's, what I ask my point is, there's thirty thousand left, potentially, plus.
I think they wanted to do some remodeling to the bathrooms, was on their agenda to make them handicapped, I think, not flush, um, some different things with the bathrooms. They wanted to get the floor refinished over there because of what was had been done. I think there's some window replacement, maybe they were trying to look at redesign that foyer when we come in because the steps are so steep, but.
I do remember there was a couple, three things.
I think there's, I think those items are still on the table, they're worth that estimate.
I should say, yeah, okay, I was just curious, yeah, why were you, this one right now?
Now, they might not be able to complete all those projects because they might run out of funds, but I know that that's their idea.
So they ran out of funds, who's covering, this, this place?
No, they just don't get to do the project.
Okay, my question is, that roof leaks over there, why didn't they do on the roof before they do the kitchen?
So the roof, my, my, um, goal was to use our arba funding that we had two hundred and sixty thousand dollars remaining, I think, maybe two twenty, I can't remember the exact number offhand, was to allocate some of that funding towards the senior center roof, because that would have been the last roof that we had to do and our township should be different every or four to years.
And I don't really, and the, and I'm not really sure how the policy works, because, you know, we own the building.
Correct.
And they just technically lease it for a buck or whatever it is. So, it may be our responsibility for the roof, anyway, but I'm just saying, if there's any, any left in there, I wouldn't mind using partial of that for it. Did they ever complete the bathrooms over there?
That's going to be another project that comes to us, I thought, yeah, that's on their agenda to get redone, too. Um, with no more discussion, can we move forward with the roll call on that, Amy, please?
Tim?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes. Motion passed by zero. Okay, we'll move on to new business, um, with that being said, at time, please. I think I got a full time.
Yeah, six forty-one.
Okay, I'm going to motion to open the public hearing at six forty-one.
Support.
Thank you, Eric. While on Bakers, AI.
AI.
All right, public hearing is officially open, if anybody would like to comment on the budget presented for fiscal year and twenty twenty-six. Okay, had a quiet group tonight. That being said, I'll go ahead and make a motion to close the budget public hearing at six forty-two PM. Support, thank you, um, Bakers, AI.
AI.
AI. Motion passed by zero. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to adapt the twenty twenty-sixth full year budget. Uh, hold on, let me make my wording right. Michigan Department of Treasury Uniform Budget Manual for that for township's general appropriations act along with cost factors attached.
For the twenty-fifth, twenty-five, twenty-six.
General Appropriations Act.
What was the last thing you had done there, the call center?
Call centers, so attached, these are your cost.
Oh.
Yeah. So a motion to adapt the Michigan Department of Treasury Uniform Budget Manual for that for township twenty-five, twenty-six general appropriations act with cost factors attached.
Support.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Okay, can we do a roll call? Hold on that, Amy.
Tim?
Um, yes.
Eric?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes. The budget has been adapted beginning April first by zero. Thank you for the board for your support.
And Tim?
Yes.
I, uh, with the senior center kitchen, uh, you fail to remember that, um, I was hoping that we could make sure that the contractor has a insurance policy. So if you'd like, I'll make a second motion that we include that, because since we've already closed that, so. I'd make a motion that the contractor for the radio, for the senior center, started no work until we have a copy, a current copy of his liability policy.
Support.
Okay, but, um, I don't think I need a roll call on that, I'm going to do all in favor of that, say, AI.
AI.
All of those say, AI. Motion passed by zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move forward, um, so Shannon did her interviews, it was posted in the paper, I'm going to make a motion to hire a senior center bus driver who does obtain a chauffeur's license, Suzanne Rhodes. I believe we posted that position at fourteen an hour. Amy, do you recall that, um?
Was it fourteen dollars an hour for that?
Position?
For the bus driver?
Yes.
So that'll be my motion. Part-time as well, will you please include that?
How many hours is that key?
Same thing under full time, but I don't think they usually get over ten hours, so they have their lucky payday. I'll second that. Thank you.
Is, uh, is Susan here?
No, Susan is not here, they usually let Shannon do the senior center interviews. Based on her recommendations, I think they had it posted in the paper for, we posted it for a week, two weeks? In the paper.
She's the only one.
Suzanne was, she only had, she was. Suzanne was interested, I believe, in my position before we posted to, she wanted her person to be able to.
She's the only one, I've led jobs.
My senior manager.
Yeah, I know, but still.
Yeah, I don't think it was many hours, I think about at least without even getting hours, so.
Yes.
Not really a consistent job with somebody that had, like, a few hours here and there for trips.
I, uh, I just typically don't, um, give my vote to anybody that works in this township unless they're standing right in front of me.
So I can start inviting them moving forward?
I say that for years, I keep telling people, every time the vote comes around me, I always say no, because unless the person's standing right there, you're not getting my vote.
No. Um, do we want to move forward with a roll call on that, please, Amy?
Tim?
No.
Eric?
No.
John?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes. Motion passed three-two. Okay, so the, that for township rental agreement, um, Tammy did a wonderful job, she revised a few things in here, we changed mapping the entire floor to spot map. I kind of feel like that's a little more appropriate, um, and requirement than the map that's entire floor. Um. She did a couple little updates, what else did she do on here she was looking at? She looks, that was the main thing, that was something that she addressed, but, um, a fuse box, because we had it located in the fuse box, she changed it on here. Updated the main insurance. Um, and then she also, there was a piece in here where it was after the first board meeting that we returned the deposit, she noted in there that we would contact them when they're checking the bill. The deposit, so, she did do some updating, and then she did a checkup, she did as well, to check out, I think everything was okay with, um, the initial whoever checked.
Did the fee schedule change, or is that the same?
The schedules are the same, we just did it up there, so, you just updated it for a little bit.
It's good.
Yeah, she did a great job on that. Um, so I'm making a motion to adopt, adapt the updated, uh, that for township rental agreement for the hall.
Support.
Thank you. Um, let's do a roll call, vote it.
Tim?
No.
Eric?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes. Motion passed, was it four one? Thank you. Okay, so the Genesee County Road Commission projects, we had already at the last meeting done the four-eye approval. Um, we also have already done a Barron Road, um, approval for gravel on Barron between, um, Lewis and Bright. Um, so I want to add a couple more roads, few more miles of roads, I would like to do Center Road right out here from Wilson to Vienna Road. Um, so I'm making a motion to accept the bid in the amount of township participation at a hundred and ten thousand for Center Road from the Genesee County Road Commission. Is there any discussion?
So, where you, where you get this, where you taking this money from?
Um, in our new budget, we have three hundred thousand and we get the fifty-fifty match, so, um, they are going to be able to fifty-fifty match every, um, project.
Every project?
Every project that I am doing this year, I know, right, so, we had a long discussion because Rachel really wants to do a lot of roads this year, so, yes. So we'll be able to do two, three, one mile gravel, three miles maybe if we adapt all this, plus every four-eye treatment.
So why did the town decide to do fifty-fifty on every road?
Every road that we're purple, so, I don't know about other municipalities, but we will all be covered by fifty-fifty, so I figure we might as well spend our funds while we.
Absolutely, because they don't do gravel going down that line zone or whatever.
Yes, line zone is what I believe we approved.
They don't always do that, Tim, they don't always do fifty-fifty on everything, right.
Um, so with that, I don't know if we want to, um, roll the call vote, please, Amy?
Tim?
Uh, yes.
Eric?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes. Motion passed. Okay, the next one is to make a motion to do Francis Road, two miles of paving from Genesee Road to Basser, in the township participation amount of eighty-nine thousand dollars.
When's that going to be done, then?
I, I, I support.
All right, I support you.
It'll be two inches of, um, paving, milling and paving, two inches. Uh, so this is project is where I, this is me and Dan's, um, last project on Francis, Francis Road. And that will be completely paved since him and I took office, so we worked fifty-fifty. So if you notice, the grant total is three hundred and fifty-six thousand. GCRC is going to handle it, pay a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, Genesee is going to do eighty-nine thousand, or they're going to do eighty-nine thousand. So that is off for two miles of paving road.
Mm-hmm.
Um, now, to bring some more light to this conversation, this is the mile, one of these miles in here that includes that bridge work we're going to be getting done and hoping for the grant. The road is horrendous, so the new paving is going to happen before the bridge work gets done. But they're going to have to take the back way then, so it doesn't mess the road up, that was a conversation me and Genesee had, but they are very adamant that they really want to get it done. And if we have the fifty-fifty money, I just, just go ahead, because that road is horrendous. So, we're already making the way out the bridge, at least I can do is pave the road, so.
My question, is the road only two inches, the whole road?
Usually that's all they.
Yeah, I know, the reason I'm saying that, if you go down, they did Lake Road, Donsey Lake, if you drive down that road, you look at, this already got holes in it.
I'll do a drive down there.
And, and there's cracks about this wide, all up and down that road for miles.
That's the one we just did, it's.
Correct.
Did I get a second on that? First.
Second.
Yeah.
Now.
But anyway, the road on Lake Road is horrible.
I can do a drive over there, I'll go sign down, because we jumped at that door at the end of the year.
Correct, and that road's got cracks and it's already got holes in it. And that's why I said two inches ain't enough, because you put two inches on it.
I think we had a lot of hard riders on that road.
A lot of hard riders on that road.
I think it's mostly due to the fact.
I don't know, there's a lot of water, some, I saw.
It's got a lot of trees. And, and trees just don't allow the frost to come out evenly. So you have parts of the road which still have, you know, frost in it, and you have parts of the road that the frost is slowly coming out of it. And then, as we've been informed by the county road commission, that the two main things that cause the most mud damage to the roads are garage trucks and school buses. And that's because there's, you know, they're constantly driving on the side of the road, making stops, and so they end up tearing it up very bad. But I, I, I think it's, I mean, if you look at most of our north and south roads, they're quite good. If you look a lot of our east and west roads, they're bad, and it's, I think it's mostly due to the amount of tree coverage, you don't get any light, you know, and for weeks, it's, the thaw, the thawing off process takes weeks longer than it would in a north and south.
Makes sense.
They put, there was a thing, they put two inches down, and they got that roller going across that packs it down to one inch. That's all that's going on that road, all that is, is a band-aid.
I mean, it costs, obviously, this is eighty-nine thousand, just for us to do two inches, that's part of your shows with, with Genesee, so I don't.
They don't do that, yeah, they, the, the road commission doesn't do three-inch caps anymore, I don't know why, they just don't, that's what I'm saying, you're going to put a two-inch asphalt in that machine from buying, pushes it out, and then that road comes in and pushes it down, you got one inch on that road. Then them trucks come down.
I can get it, my boys remember, you can call them.
I'll tell them.
See, we can get, uh.
We need, there should be more, it's just, I'm telling you, it's just like Lake Road, they did the same thing, and that road was a mess.
So they can commit next year.
Yeah, you're, you're not, you're not wrong, Tim, it's just, I think it has to do with a cost analysis perspective of it, and I think that what they've done is they, because I guess, when I first got here as a trustee, uh, ten years ago, or twelve years ago, or whatever it was, uh, you know, those were sort of the same questions I had too, and when I talked to the person and, and, and so forth, I quickly learned that it's just they have a standard operating procedure, they go off statistical analysis, and they really don't, it's just, to them, it's just a routine, they don't really, you know, it's not really scientifically.
It's like the road you're trying to put in right now, my, this is my opinion. I think that road needs to be tore up and have a new one put in instead of two inches, because I'm telling you, all you're doing is putting a band-aid on it, and number all we got cracks, and they're going to sweep it or whatever, they're going to put that down, it's going to come up.
I probably will.
Oh, it will.
I would doubt it. We'll see, though, we'll try. Uh, so we'll move forward with roll call, please, if you have any.
Tim?
No.
Eric?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes. Motion passed by the four one. Okay, um, thank you board for your support, that agenda, I appreciate it, um, we can move forward with, uh, brief public comments, please?
Well, I only have one. So, when somebody rents the hall, is somebody going to come in, because Sue used to do it, and make sure that everything's correct before they get their, um, their refund back? Because they're still taping things up, I mean. You know, messing up those, I just wonder, because I know for a.
With overview, usually on Mondays, Tammy or Vicki will run through here, Stacy, and just kind of check to make sure that the main things are taken care of.
Right.
Um, and then we try to make sure that it's stacked up Thursday, if there is a big effect that we need to accommodate on a Saturday, me or Stacy, one of us will get up here and try to check it out.
All I know is Sue used to come and do it, and then she would just come in and tell somebody at the office that everything's good, or it wasn't.
We do need a cleaning person, I will agree, that'll be the next position I have, or that we can need.
And honestly, she used to do a good job, she used to just use that polisher, maybe once a month or something, and clean the floors up, so. Just a suggestion.
Thank you. Um, any other brief comments? Okay, uh, with that being said, floor number comments, Eric, do you want to start us off?
Um, I, just on the, uh, the senior center bus driver, Susan, there, I, I like, uh, I like, I just prefer seeing people that I'm going to, um, that are going to work for this township, I, I suppose I, um, call it, uh, call it whatever, uh, but, uh, I, we've just had, so, I guess maybe, maybe it's just me, and, and maybe it's just because I've had some issues with some employees at the township before, and, uh, people that I've hired, that I had no idea that who I was hiring, didn't know this person, never saw them before, and then all of a sudden, this person's called, take the problem, and I'm getting complaints from residents, and they're telling me, well, you voted, you, you hired this person, and I'm like, I don't know who you're talking about, I've never even met the person. And, uh, and then I, and then I always feel that my vote is inadequate to my own level of what I can do, and I suppose, uh, yeah, I also just like meeting the people, um, that, uh, that work here, and I just want to meet them, I want to see them face-to-face. I feel like if you're going to apply for a job here, and you're not coming in, in for the interview directly, or to get, get to vote on it, I guess maybe, you know, my vote doesn't matter enough, and that's the way I feel about it. Other than that, thank you all for coming out, have a good evening.
Thank you, John.
Oh, I just got a couple things, I, I, just for future agendas, um, I want to, you know, and I'm sure you're already involved in this, but, you know, dealing with the military equipment, you know, getting it gone from here. And also, I'd like to have a discussion coming up, uh, the police station, you know, um, um, my personal opinion is, uh, I would rent that building um, to a small business, real estate or something, they had to pay all utilities, and, uh, any money we made from that go into the, into the, the cemetery fund. But, that's my opinion, but either way, we're wasting that building there, and I think we should do something with it.
And, John, can I add one more thing?
No.
Um, the, uh, I think it's also, uh, important to the sport to consider, um, an electrical inspector, um, for the upcoming solar farms. And I think, uh, uh, my cousin was the one that came forward, he's an electric, he's, he's a state electrical inspector. He doesn't, he's, he didn't come here and ask him for more work or nothing like that, it's not about that, it's just that he knows electrical inspections, and he knows, he knows a lot about that, that, that area of expertise, and he inspects other solar farms in other communities, and he came here and he told you what the cost per permits of each of these things are. And I also think that in this particular situation, with the gravity of the solar farms that are coming here, I think that we need to, uh, maybe have an in-house electrical inspector, and maybe, uh, maybe, maybe with, through that, we'll have a little bit more control, um, or even to the degree of like monitoring, like what's going on. Okay, and just, and, and I think it's also a, um, a, a financially, um, uh, logical move for the township as well, uh, rather than that, that permanent money going to Vienna Township. I mean, if the money, if we're getting the permanent money here, uh, you know, I just think if, if anything's going on with that project, that it needs to benefit this township, uh, any way that, that it can, and, uh, that's all I'm saying, I think.
Thank you, John?
Yes, I have a, I think the people you hired, like you hired Benny, Benny, I'm, I agree with Eric, he should have been here, but I voted for him, but I do agree with Eric, the neck, the peaceful, people that come, wants these jobs now, they should be present. They should be, they should be present. Because I voted for Benny because you needed it, other than that, I wouldn't have voted for him, because I, I am sticking my.
Are you glad you voted for him now?
Yeah, he did a good job, I, I, but I'm just saying, the people that from now on need to be here, be present.
Stacy? I want to thank our maintenance guy, Ben H. Smith, he's done wonderful drywall work, he's getting all the less old equipment, and the garage ready for you guys to inventory it, he's writing it down, he's done amazing work, and I want to thank you guys for all coming up, get extra space out there, as you see, yeah, we're excited about that, we can, we can have more.
All right, so you put the chairs up.
Um, I just, I want to thank the board, you guys' support of getting that budget through, uh, that is huge, um, we have had issues in the past, but breath of fresh air, I do appreciate you coming this evening. Um, definitely, I think that moving forward, I will make sure that any of our competitors come in, so that you guys can ask some questions, I get to know them, I think that that definitely is an impact and a very good statement. Um. Well, so, John, as you know, that, that, we're going to get through that this spring, that's my point, that is definitely on the agenda. And you have mentioned more than a few times about the city station, so we need to start taking some action, I agree with you on that. Um. Other than that, I do thank everyone for coming out, I do want to give a heads up, I didn't have, I forgot to put it on the agenda, but I do want to make sure that the board is aware, the hall was rented for the April fifteenth meeting, that we moved from April. but I do wanna make sure that the board is aware, the hall was rented for the April fifteenth meeting, that we moved from April to Tuesday, um, so I will probably, and I won't need everyone, just four people, but, um, maybe make a motion to cancel that or reschedule that in April, but the hall was rented, I don't know. I made that motion, I moved it, I wasn't aware, so. Um, and then a couple weeks, I'll just do a quick special meeting in the morning or something, as I always say, a forum. Um, and maybe look at canceling that meeting and just pick it back up in May, or reschedule when the board wants to. But I think we already pre-authorized all the April bills, um, to be paid, and we can, um, pick that up in May, yes. Hopefully, John's got our estimates for the kitchen, and we can roll through, maybe look at the less of stuff, too.
What else to mention, is Dylan getting tickets for that one?
Yeah.
That special meeting, um, the, uh, the, the policy that we have in effect, um, or that we put into effect, uh, that may be need for, uh, extra for special meetings, is that still in effect?
Yes.
Okay, okay, uh, all right, I see no reason to change that, I think it's only fair, um, and this, you know, in, in these times, I just think it's fair to ask people to do more work. Um, that you're just paying more money, I, I just, I don't, I don't think we can go backwards and ask people to do more work for less money, I don't, I wouldn't expect that of any of you, and I wouldn't expect that of any employee of the township, so, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, I think that, oh, on the electrical inspector, I think we want to reiterate that we do have that agreement with Vienna. So that is something that we need to look at, and we need to get in conversation with Joe Ritz regarding that agreement. Um, I did, I was your, um, cousin, I didn't even know that was your cousin who came here that evening.
Yes.
Um, that was very good information for our township, so I do have every intention of meeting with Joe Ritz from Vienna Township to, to look over that. And with that being said, I'll make a motion to, what's your?
Vote.
Thank you. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed, five zero.
But I seen them as well.
If you wanna comment, that was, that was the one, too, but.
Did the guy come through with the one that I talked to? I might take it just so that I tell everybody exactly, so they're all doing the same. John, were you getting yesterday? So, no, no, I'll, I'll just call contractors. I'll tell them, I'll walk them up here, I'll say, this is what I want done. Here, here's the question I have, why I'm asking.
Don't forget the bathrooms, John. Do not forget the bathroom.
Don't get the water problem.
You want the kitchen and the bathrooms, no, a lot of worry. They have those new ones, but they do have pretty worse, they're like, they're like, and they, yeah.
Yeah, you got the bottle ones.